I would like to go ahead and bring this meeting to order. And if you would all rise and join, I don't know if if the city was was ready for a pledge of allegiance. But if you could all join me, if you can assist flag in the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate that. Oh, you did not disappoint. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic or which is saying one nation under God indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. O'Connell, you 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 made it, and I appreciate that. If we can get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli. Councilmember No will be noted as absent. Councilmember Saragosa will also be noted as absent. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Thomas.
Here. All right. I don't believe we have any announcements or presentations to the public at this time. And if I can get a motion to adopt the agenda.
Vote for adoption.
All right. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi. All right. I have a brief statement I'd like to share with you really quick. Before we get started here.
Dennis.
Yes.
Cleve wanted to say something.
Yes.
Mayor, can I just make a brief announcement about there's been some confusion about the April 7th date? And under announcements for the history presentation that we have planned based on our last agenda. I just want to announce that due to complications or not complication, but issues putting that together. We have put, we are putting that together as not as a specific date, but as a recorded presentation by our presenters. And we hope to have that available on April 9th. So prior to our next council meeting, it will be available on our website for anyone to view at any time they would like to. So I just want to correct that so that information is out there. We were not able to get everything together for the seventh, but we hope to have it ready on April 9th.
All right. And we'll put out a message like we do for council meetings that that's available for viewing.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. All right, thank you. So first and foremost, I want to thank everyone who has tuned in tonight for this evening for this discussion on this matter. As mayor, I value our staff time and our community's time. And I don't take the responsibility of calling a special meeting very lightly, especially on such short notice. So I understand the significance of that and the importance. There are two reasons I am calling the special meeting. The most important is to inform our community of a likely action that the county board supervisors is going to be taking that will have a long term ramifications on the core of our city. And also discuss the matter in an open and transparent meeting. And I'll share a little with you more about my thoughts on that in a few minutes as we get going through this. With with regard to conflicts of interest, we do have two council members that aren't here. And both of them, mayor, I'm not mayor. Councilmember Saragosa has his wife is going to be on the board or is on the board now of the Arts and Culture Eldorado. So he is recusing himself. And council member No has an incubator program that she has started with the recently started with the Arts and Culture Eldorado. So she has also recused herself. And as for me, early on, both Wendy and I had made sure that throughout this process, we had no conflict of interest. And we made sure that that didn't exist. With an abundance of caution, though, we have both consulted our respective councils and board attorneys to ensure that we maintain integrity throughout this process. And the only potential conflict that surfaced was the proximity of my business to the subject buildings. And I believe they're 851 feet away or somewhere in that range. And after a thorough review, it was determined that that did not pose a conflict of interest either. So we I have been spending and paying close attention to that. And I just wanted to make sure that fully disclose that we are that I have looked into it in great detail. And to make sure that we're doing this the right way. And so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Cleve Morris to to talk about his to go through his staff report. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity. So I'm going to go through this fairly detailed and then we can go through any questions you may have. So in 2016, the Arts Council began a study to prepare a master plan for Eldorado County, not just Plasville, but all of Eldorado County. That took quite some time. There's a lot of work that went into that. The Director of Arts and Culture Eldorado could talk to it more thoroughly. But I know there were a large list of interviewees, council members, citizens, county board of supervisors, et cetera. I do believe that all of our seated city council at that time were interviewed for the project. One of the initiatives that came out of that study was to look at creating a cultural district. And they looked at specifically in the city of Plaserville. They then went to the next step was to correct that, to repair that cultural district by doing a feasibility study. That also took quite some time to prepare over, well, close to a year, I would guess, to prepare that feasibility study. That document looked at five buildings in the city of Plaserville. They looked at the current historic city hall buildings at 487, 489 Main Street. It looked at the courthouse building, which at the time was being considered. And there was a blue ribbon committee in the process of looking at reuses for the courthouse building. Because it was going to be a new courthouse was going to be built and that building was going to be abandoned. And then they also looked at 515, 525 Main Street, the previous district attorney buildings, which are currently vacant and is the subject of this discussion tonight. The feasibility study laid out a plan to use the buildings and to create a cultural district for Eldorado County in the city of Plaserville. In November of 2018, the council approved the release. Well, let me go back. Yeah, the county, the city council approved a release to look at our city hall buildings. During that release, we received two proposals, one from Eldorado Arts Council, which is currently today Arts and Culture Eldorado, and one from the Wapoomis Nishtenonmiwak Nation of Shingle Springs. We received proposals from both, and we received first, a public presentation was made to a committee which consisted of council members Borelli and Taylor, and Plasville Economic Advisory Committee members Adam Anderson and Deborah Miller, and courthouse blue ribbon committee member Connie Zalinski. The committee reviewed the proposals and made a recommendation to accept the proposal by Arts and Culture Eldorado. The presentation, that recommendation, and then therefore a presentation then went forward to the city council. Again, a public presentation, which was presented by Arts and Culture Eldorado and the Wapoomis tribe also at that time made a presentation. And so a public presentation, which the public had an opportunity to see, comment on, and fully understand what was being presented by both groups. During that meeting, it was discovered and brought up that there was an error in the RFP process. And therefore, it was requested that those are those proposals recommended that those proposals be thrown out and we allow for a new process to submit proposals. We did that, and we had a due date of July 31st, 2019 for those proposals. On that date, we received one complete proposal. We received a second proposal late that was incomplete. Therefore, we only accepted the one proposal and we returned the other proposal that was late and incomplete. The proposal that we did receive was from Arts and Culture Eldorado. So once again, on September 24th of 2020, the city council, or excuse me, shortly after July 31st, the city council received another presentation by Arts and Culture Eldorado to look at the to see what they had planned. And it was again, based on the same proposal that they had submitted before. So again, the public had an opportunity input. And then on later that year, the city approved that proposal and awarded it to Arts and Culture Eldorado. Since that time, we've been working with them on lease negotiation. That was actually on September 24th of 2019. I want to mention that that's a typo in my staff report. It says 2021, but it's actually 2019 when they awarded that. Since that time, we've been working with Arts and Culture Eldorado on several issues. They have a short term lease in the building. We're making progress towards a more long term agreement that will improve the buildings and bring those up to speed. The reason I bring all that up, you ask why, how that relates to the DA buildings is the fact that the presentations that they gave for the feasibility study included all five buildings. They were specifically because of our proposal related to our buildings. However, their presentation clearly showed and showed what would be used for all five buildings down the road. Not so much the courthouse. We did not go into that a lot. And it was mostly for the historic city hall buildings. But clearly, it was understood that it included the other two buildings currently known as the DA buildings and what would be happening at those. In early 2020, the city began discussion with Eldorado County as the county contacted the city and asked if the city may be interested in the buildings located at 515 and 525 Main Street. The city expressed interest and began discussions about how they we might obtain those. And at that time, it was our understanding, and I think most of the discussion was centered around that those buildings would be basically given to the city, not that we would be purchasing them. Somewhere along the line, later in that, later in the year, it became apparent, we were requested to do some things to even looking at doing an appraisal for the buildings. We asked why the necessity for that, and then that rolled into later asking us to prepare and present a full proposal to to purchase the buildings. We did that. We made a proposal to to the city count or to the board of supervisors. The offer was provided, the county offering $100,000 for the purchase of the buildings. It was our understanding, we learned at that time that there was also one other group that was making a proposal for the buildings. However, all of the action by the county was done in closed session. So we were not aware of who or what the proposal was. In November of 2020, the county informed the city that they had awarded the the buildings to a nonprofit on a unanimous vote of the board of supervisors. We were concerned about that and questioned it, but but that was the action that they had taken. Then in early February of this year, the the city was informed that the board had not yet entered into an agreement with the nonprofit. And they made a request to the city, this came from the board to the city to submit a new proposal, our last best and final offer, if you will, to purchase the buildings. The city made some revisions to our proposal, but resubmitted it based on Arts and Culture Eldorado's presentation. And again, offered $100,000 for purchase of the buildings. On March 23rd, the board of supervisors met again in closed session. No, still no real look at from our point of view of what the proposal was by the opposing party or who they were. Although we were familiar with some of them and had learned who some of them were. On that day, the city was informed by staff, council, county staff that the buildings had again been awarded to the nonprofit rather than the city. Considerable amount of time, effort, and effort has gone into this process to obtain the buildings. It should be noted that the presentations were also made to the city county appointed blue ribbon committee on August 2nd, 2018, and to the Plasville Economic Advisory Committee on September 21st, 2018. Both groups voted in favor of the project. In addition, the city and county together adopted guiding principles for the blue ribbon committee to develop a plan for reuse use of these buildings. The guiding principles that were used by the blue ribbon committee in their process are attached to this report. And I'd like to point out the one statement that is in there is that the public process for reuse shall be open and dynamic. Finally, at this time, staff is seeking further direction from the city council, if any, how you would like to proceed with this, again, given the fact that the buildings, we have been notified, the buildings have been awarded to Arts and Culture Eldorado. One final point that I will make is I have had discussions with the Director of Arts and Culture Eldorado, Terry Lamontzek. And I have initiated also some discussions with Eldorado 1848, which is the other group who has made the proposal, exploring options to see if there is some way we can work together. So that this doesn't become, I'll put it on us again, them, but is there some cooperative effort that might be a win win for for both of us? So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Thank you very much, Cleve. At this time, I I know that there's a that each council member would like to make a few statements. And I think that the statements are, we're gonna, we would like to make our statements so that during public comment, people really have a chance to to understand what we're where our head is and what we're thinking as opposed to waiting till after public comments and then having a discussion without actually you being able to comment on it. I think that's important in this situation. This is, it's not a public forum, but it's that we're trying to kind of blend that together with a council meeting where we're giving you time to respond back to some of our thoughts. With that said, I wanted, I want to, I'll go through and share with you some of my thoughts. And then we'll council member Taylor and Borelli will do the same. This, you know, this, this really didn't rise to the level for me of really being a concern until the this the shift occurred the second time. And when the county came back to us and said, listen, we want you to, you know, to reapply and give you your final and best offer. It was, you know, some red flags went up and I and I and I caused me to pause and think about what was going on here. And and so I want to share with you some of my concerns. What is selling this asset to a nonprofit that's been around for less than a year? Now you'll hear that they've been around for, the people have been around, of course, these people, many of them you you would know have been around for a while. But the problem, the nonprofit itself was generally created for this purpose. And to have that show up again, it made me wonder, it made me think. So we're so, so the county is selling a building in the heart of our downtown to a nonprofit that just changed hands. They're just turned over to another nonprofit. Stability isn't is an important concern of mine when it comes to what I would consider a public asset. And I and I believe that the county has ignored the will of our community. We have put in countless hours, and so has the the Arts and Culture Eldorado in developing really a grassroots plan that is very publicly announced and given out there to use these buildings for the benefit of a greater community, including the county residents. And right now, we have not really heard any of these other presentations. And they haven't come to the sitting and said, hey, listen, we're doing this now. Granted, we've been in this back and forth with them on on discussions regarding. We've been in opposite camps. We're both vying for the same thing, the city is along with them. And so there's there's a certain extent that they wouldn't want to share their stuff with us, but they had full knowledge of everything that we had done. And I would think that if they were had that had our community's best interest. And I'm not saying they don't, but it didn't rise to the level of exploring through the city council or through other avenues, our community and what they think, that just didn't happen. So the county's moving this item out of closed session, which they made a decision to to for this, but it hasn't got, they haven't gone to a full vote yet. So I thought it was important that the city meet today and talk about this before they they sell it to this newly formed nonprofit with what I consider no accountability to the community. And I say that in a technical sense, they may feel accountable to the community and the people who are there may feel accountable to the community. And I believe in when they say that. Well, the next board of directors have that same opinion and have that same feel. And will things change over time? And this is an important concept that I that I think the county has not really considered. And and then the county is going to decide what that accountability looks like. The county has not consulted with the city and discussed how we think accountability should look for what are truly assets within our core. And yet, the county may make that determination as how they feel should they should be accountable. We haven't had that discussion with the county either. And they're so far as we know, they haven't reached out to us. Potentially this coming Tuesday, they can make that decision. And that, to me, is important because the city, in my opinion, has has a certain level of sovereignty from the county that we have our own resources and we have our own assets. And this, to me, is an asset of the city. It's an asset of the community to be shared with the community and in the in the the greater area of the county. And and that and that sovereignty, in my opinion, has been ignored by the county. And and the accountability to these to these assets are going to be left to a nonprofit that may come and go. They may change hands. They will change hands over time. Because these people are going to be around for a while. They get it going. And somebody else will come along and take it over. What does that look like? As the city council and as a as a government agency, we are accountable to the people. We get elected every four years. That doesn't happen with a nonprofit. Nonprofit can say, you know what? We're going to do our own thing. We're going to turn into clubhouse. We're going to sell it. It's up to us. It's ours. We can do what we want with. And that rise, that also rise to a level of a significance concern for me. And I think, and that's why I called the special meeting is primarily for that reason. Is that I don't feel that this should be part of a private nonprofit organization that while the people are there and and I believe their hearts in the right place, there's no guarantee and no accountability that that will maintain. And not by them, but by maybe by other people. And along another line, if, and I'm going to get off on a little bit of a tangent, but it's important here. If Eldorado Hills is thinking about becoming a city, if Eldorado Hills wants to become a city, there are county assets within that city. Potential city. And if and if and if the county decided to sell some of those county assets off to a nonprofit, not in the city, and do something different with it, that's that's not accountable to that new city of Eldorado Hills, I think that the supervisor of that district would lose his mind. I think you would be absolutely livid. And I think you could say the same thing about Coloma, about Pleasant Valley, about Tahoe City. Or I'm sorry, South Lake Tahoe. Those things, each each supervisor has their has their district. And I don't believe that that the city of Plaserville is anything different than those. That these are assets that should belong to the city of Plaserville if the county is no longer going to use them. In the past, the county has said that they really do not want to be in the business of telling the city what to do. That's a, that's almost pervasive what they want to do on Main Street. And yet, here we are. And it's causing me great concern. And 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 I'm in my core concern is the accountability. And I'm going to leave it at that for now. I want people to know, though, where I'm coming from and why I think this is so important. And I'm going to now ask Karen, Councilmember Taylor, if she has any comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, well said. Just a couple of things to add. You know, I want to be clear that our concerns here are we don't have an issue with the other proposal or the other applicant. We have, if if the county moves forward with the direction that looks like they are, I sincerely hope that they are successful in their endeavor, that their mission statement benefits the community at large and that they are able to progress through construction in a speedy and efficient way. You can't compare the merits of the two projects because we literally do not know the other project. We do know the merits of one of them, and that's Arts and Culture Eldorado. And that project has been publicly vetted by the council on multiple occasions. Be vetted by the Plaserville Economic Advisory Committee and by the Blue Ribbon. All in a very public way with a lot of public participation. And it's a really great project that, you know, that multiple compositions of the council over the years has supported. Our our concern is with the process that the county has gone through with this. You know, residents of the city elect council members to represent their best interests and prudently oversee the management of their public resources. And the county's process has denied residents of the city a seat at the table in determining how these buildings in the heart of their city will be moved. And that's a real concern for our for us. And and that's why we called this meeting in our campaign steps.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. And Councilmember Borelli.
Well, there's not too much more I can add. I agree with both of you. It was just, I was so disappointed when we weren't approved the first time because, as Cleve mentioned in his report, the the years and years of planning. And we really thought that we were going to have this fine cultural district. It was just a win win situation in partnering with Arts and Culture and establishing the usage of those old buildings and have them, you know, maintain them and and still offer so many opportunities in their plans to the city and our surrounding, the folks in that surround the city of Plaserville. And, you know, we we our hopes were high and and then rather dashed. I mean, to go from the county indicating they were going to give us the buildings and then to have, you know, asking us for, you know, to proposals, I mean, everything just changed, as was mentioned many times. I don't need to go into it again. And it was such a disappointment, as I have stated. And then that to have it brought back a second time, we we had such a glimmer of hope and I I think the chair, the Arts and Culture also got their hopes up. And in touring that building and again, reviewing the plans that that had been made for that. It was just a win win situation for the city of Plaserville. And I I I again, it was just the disappointment of then hearing again. And I really think the city did due diligence in everything that we went through. I'm so disappointed that the the county acted in the way they did. You know, the city, when we have an item that involves the city and actually some with the county, but we have all presentations, we give people a chance to, you know, voice their opinions and Cleve has shared with us many times that he didn't have any idea who we were, who we were up against, who was our opposition. And I still don't know, quite frankly, I don't know who we're talking about other than I've heard a name, I don't know, 18 something and other. And I don't know who the members are. I don't know. You know, and we really, I just feel like the county really has not done justice for us. And I I really think that they owe us more. And they they, I feel as though they should have had public hearings and they should have seen our presentations and given us more of a chance. And especially to know what we're bidding against. So anyway, I I don't know what else to say, except that I I just wish that they would reconsider.
Thank you, Patty. One of the things I have done is I've reached out to Chris Payne from 1840 Eldorado Gold, 1848, I think is the name. I could, I might have gotten that a little wrong, but I could, I might have gotten that a little wrong, but and I've asked him to, if he would like to um. Have a little extra time to represent uh this organization. And while it's not gonna be a full-blown presentation, um because we don't have time. We, this is not what this meeting's about right now. It's not about whether we're going to approve or disapprove their program. But I thought he should at least have a voice in the room and that organization should have a voice in the room to. To share what they're doing. So that the public can actually for the, you know, a lot of people in our city for the first time actually hear this. And it's, you know, it's concerning to me that this is the first time and I think it's still important that they do hear it. Um this is not about a gotcha moment where, you know, they're not, they're gonna come in and we're gonna say, look, you did it all wrong and. And but at the same time, to me, this is about what's important to the city, these assets. And I'm not saying like like Councilwoman Taylor said, I'm not saying they they've done a bad job, that their program is not. It is, it the it has merit. It's really, it's an important thing about it to me, is still about the nonprofit. Having uh a an asset that has been a a community asset, either by. What being held by the county or, in my opinion, should be held by the city. And and it it just to just to kind of let the ground, lay the groundwork a little bit. City manager Morris. Has indicated that the that he that he has reached out to eighteen forty-eight and talked to them. And and I'm in agreement that that if we can find a way that both of these organizations work together and that the city maintains ownership, I think that could be a win-win. And that everybody has an opportunity to work with this. I know that we have talked to Arts and Culture El Dorado as well and. And they're amenable to actually having this conversation. So that's where we're at. And with that, I am going to um. We're gonna open it up, not for public comment yet, but for Chris Payne to provide a presentation.
Can you hear me?
Uh we can hear you, Chris. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if you told everybody I'm at the library in my car.
I haven't.
Okay, so I'm in the library at my car. Right now, I turned my engine off so I can, I have a hundred percent laptop filled here, so I'm ready to go. Um a couple of things. First of all, eighteen forty-eight, El Dorado Gold, eighteen forty-eight, it's not private. Um in fact, just a second and I'll tell you why. Um also, Arden Culture El Dorado is not directly a proposer in this matter. It's the city of Placerville. You can go to any of the closed sessions and see. City managers listed as being one of the people that you that the county's negotiating with. And also, it's not easy. It's not easy to go through the county system. It's 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 difficult. You alluded it in your staff report that it's it's got some strange things about it. But we had some strange things also. So. Why does it, okay, with the departure of the county DA, its buildings have become vacant since December two thousand and seventeen. And declared surplus on May eighth. On the following dates, the board of supervisors discussed this. April the twenty-first, June ninth, June twenty-third, October the twentieth. These are all of of twenty twenty. Uh January twenty-sixth and February ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. The El Dorado County Gold eighteen forty-eight is a nonprofit public benefit corporation. Five oh one C three, whose express purpose is to create a museum to display heritage and enhance future endeavors. Through education and preservation of the historical buildings and historical artifacts. Eighteen forty-eight's first endeavor is to purchase and manage the buildings and property to be acquired from El Dorado County. By fifteen, five twenty-five Main Street, generally called the old WP Post Office nineteen forty. And the historic telephone annex about nineteen thirty-seven, nineteen thirty-eight. As described in an email and attachment providing this public comment. On uh January sixteenth, board supervisor's agenda, this is the past agenda number twenty-three. An understanding had been reached between the El Dorado County Historical Society Society and the newly formed El Dorado Gold eighteen forty-eight. With the board supervisor's concurrence and acceptance and with the understanding of county council. El Dorado Gold eighteen forty-eight has assumed the El Dorado Historical Society's refined proposal, primary responsibility for the. And El Dorado County Historical Society has moved to a secondary responsibility. Originally envisioned for the Mineral and Gem Society, who chose not to participate. At the at at a moment. With a sporting cooperation of the El Dorado County Historical Society, El Dorado Gold eighteen forty-eight. Has been created specifically for the purpose of completing the negotiations with the county inquiring. Five twenty-five Main Street. The business plan of eighteen forty-eight is to acquire these properties and manage them for the specific benefit of El Dorado County. And Placerville community, for the general benefit of all history lovers and specifically children. Because of the unique Main Street placerville location and historic significance of these properties, these properties. County properties are going to be a community center, museum, including resources. That's five fifteen and five twenty-five will have office space be leased to other nonprofits, for instance. Oregon California Trails Association. That's John Winter, Dee Owens. Um they're local and they're looking for space and they need um they need room. Now, individually, historically correct bail boxes will be available to the tenants. Going to the point of the post office and its theme, the community center will be this museum and resource. And will have historically significant displays on the walls and in display cases. In addition, there will be meeting space for the use of supporting each tenant's operation and membership. The main lobby and the general entrance will sifts of the Tommy Lewis nineteen forty-one oil on canvas mural for. For a forest genetics, a public counter, the old safe, plays and wall hangings. The lobby will be converted to a large meeting space. Convertible to a large meeting space with a screen monitor, audio visual enhancement. Smaller meeting rooms will be available for rent. The financial viability of eighteen forty-one is dependent on the rents collected, sponsorship, donation and grants received. The success model used to pattern the eighteen forty-eight's business plan is the El Dorado County twenty sixteen. World Gold Panning Champions. As you know, city was in very much involved with that, including. We use Main Street as the world tour, excuse me, the world parade. And we had a lot of events and activities in the general area. This event consisted of volunteers, sponsors, promotions, community involvement, websites, supporting activities. With the county government, city government, county chambers commerce and county office of education support. Eighteen forty-eight's board of directors is Fred Otte, president. He's the past president of the Gem and Mineral Society. He's a retired State Farm Insurance Agent for Cameron Park. Chris Payne, vice president, past president of the El Dorado County Historical Society, Sue Sue Taylor. Secretary. Building design and co-owner with Tim of the Herrick and Hangmatree Buildings, as we scored. Uncle Fuzzy Mason, treasurer, bookkeeper, tax advising, US Gold Panning Association president. Jill Kearney, board member, president of the El Dorado County Historical Society. Julie Aiken Bauer, board member, Gold Trail Union Elementary School District Board of Trustees. Though initially identified as the El Dorado County Historical Society proposal. All of the participants of this newly formed eighteen forty-eight were associated in some way with the proposal team. From the original and refined proposals submitted by the Historical Society. The heart, creative value and the proposed effort have never changed. I'm almost finished on Dennis, just a few more minutes. On the twenty-eighth of October, a letter from Russ Fackrell, of which we have a copy. Was to the City of Placerville Planning Commission and Planning Department stating, quote. In accordance with Government Code Section sixty-five, four oh two, this letter serves as formal notice. To the City of Placerville regarding the proposed conveyance of the above referenced project, five fifteen and five twenty-five. Of the El Dorado County Historical Society to restore, preserve or both. For the benefit of the citizens of the county, the historical nature of and the historical nature of this property. Moving right along. The use of both buildings. Five fifteen will become the El Dorado County History and Education Center. And will include displays and recognitions of the legends of El Dorado County, including Charlie Parkers, Hank Monk. Snowshoe Thompson, John Studebaker, the Heritage Families of El Dorado County. The historical uh post office, classroom post office. The Pony Express, the wagon train, the Gold Panning Museum, the El Dorado County Western Railway Museum. George Peabody and Professor George Wielden. Five twenty-five Main Street will become an inclusive center for nonprofit organizations of El Dorado County. Individual office space will be made available at a at a very recent price. And uproom availability for the tenants. The planned sustainability of the venture, the properties will not be encumbered by mortgages, operational expenses. Insurance utilities, maintenance will be covered by the rental of the offices at five twenty-five, as well as the offices at forty-five. As utilized successfully by the county-supported twenty fifteen World Panning World Championship. Fundraisers will be planned, donations will be solicited, grants will be submitted following the close. Let's go for for the remodeling, here area to support. Let me just say, I'm not sure if you know, both roofs are in trouble. And specifically, five twenty-five needs to be completely replaced. In our proposal, it's that we will do that work using donors, of which we've already got. Two donors who have proposed. All we need to do is get the occupancy of those buildings. But those roofs gotta be taken care of. That the walls are are starting to deteriorate in a couple places. And if you took your tour, you realize that. Created earlier, El Dorado Gold nineteen forty-eight was incorporated with a specific purpose. Creating a, this is quote, creating a museum to display heritage and enhance future endeavors through education. Preservation of historical buildings and artifacts. And I detailed that specifically in my um in my writings of February the ninth this year. Finally, the success of this proposal is not based on speculation or promises. This proposal team is comprised of the same individual and groups who created and managed the World Gold Panning Championship. The proposal for the purchase of five fifteen and five twenty-five Main Street is the same dedication, has the same dedication and merit. As that proposed World World Panning Champ, in which it was county participated and it was economically beneficial. Now, the city of Placerville also can be included in that. This was written for the county. So now I want to say for the city of Placerville, it's the same thing. For those of you that know me. El Dorado Gold eighteen forty-eight is ready to go. Not talking about what the future may hold, not talking about a plan, but talking about actual practical realities. If you've got to have this run like business, or else it's not gonna work. Take any questions. I could have talked about a lot of things that I felt that I didn't wanna ethically get involved. I don't wanna say what's wrong with some of your work in terms of the staff report. But at the same time, I wanted to give you a flavor of what El Dorado Gold eighteen forty-eight is.
And you did that and that's exactly what I, why I invited you in here, Chris.
You invited me in here and Dennis, I appreciate that. That call this morning was very meaningful to me when you told me. That there needed me sometime. And and again, I'm ready for any questions or if the public has something and you wanna come back to me. I'll be right here at the parking lot at the library.
All right. Well, well, yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate you taking the time to share your.
I assume.
Honestly, for the first time, a lot of us are just hearing this. So I and I do appreciate you taking the time to.
Now, I assume you're gonna mute me, right? You're gonna mute me.
Yeah, well, um why don't you mute yourself?
Okay, I will. I will unmute myself.
Yeah, okay, then we'll go from there.
Yeah, once you mute me. Oh, there it is, mute.
All right. Does anybody have any questions uh for Chris at this time, uh for council, from council? All right, seeing none. I guess at this time, I really appreciate Chris and it was important that we at least get a glimpse of what they're doing. Um and it's important uh now that we go ahead and open this up to uh for public comment. And Ms. O'Connell, if we can do that, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're joining by your computer, you can press the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. If you're joining by phone, um and you'd like to make a comment, you can do so by pressing the uh star nine on your phone. And when I call upon you, please unmute yourself and you will be limited to three minutes. Let's start with Brian. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Sorry, thank you.
Thanks so much. Yeah, uh this is, sounds like a great program, just fantastic program. It brings that culture and that heritage. Um a lot of people, when they come up to visit Placerville, they're looking for that. That information. They really wanna know the past histories and this seems much more inclusive, much more interactive. I think that's a really great plan. And I I remember when the Arts Council entered into the RFP. For the ketchup and mustard and anything and whatnot. I think it's really beneficial that this organization, though new, which is built up of so many incredible minds. From the the Historical Society, I think it is. Really imperative that they are, and going through the county system is very difficult. And I really truly believe that, you know, the county has awarded it already to this group, that it remains with this group. They've met all the requirements. The buildings are in county jurisdiction. They're the owners of it and it's going through this uh transfer process into the hands of this organization. And I don't think this is the organization that's gonna just, you know, move shop into something else. I I really don't think that is their prerogative. Especially because they're so um, they're members of this community, very strong members of this community that have been here already for such a long time. I I worry about um the city taking control over this entity. And honestly, from the beginning of when you guys were talking, it just kinda sounded like. You know, even if the Arts Council wants to work together, it seems that you favor the Arts Council more. And it worries me that this organization would not get that oper, the same opportunity that they're currently having right now. If it was in the jurisdiction of the city to make that call, because it sounds like you guys favor the Arts Council and it would. Kinda be, it would push this amazing group out of the way to make room for the Arts Council. And I have nothing against Arts Council. I think they do an amazing job of what they do. I just feel that this organization has gone through the necessary steps, have done the due diligence, worked through the county. Gone through, you know, the red tape and all the silver lining around it. And they were rightfully awarded these buildings and they've gone through the process. They have the financials to back it up. They have the team to back it up. They have the uh the credentials to back it up, not only what the Historical Society. But with the Gold Panning Championship, which brought a ton of people to Main Street and it was well-inclusive, not only the county, but the city. And incredible people that were, that came internationally to Placerville specifically for that event. And I wanna see more people coming to Placerville to engage in this amazing interactive museum. Thank you.
Jay Bigford, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh Birdfoot, huh? I guess that's what it shows on my thing. This is Jill Kearney. I'm the president of the Historical Society. I'm so glad that all the electronics worked so that I could take this uh meeting in. I just wanna say, since I've been the president of the Historical Society since this whole thing started. Um back, no, it's April last year. Um I feel eighteen forty-eight is a grafting from the Historical Society tree because we're all in this thing together. Um it's been focused, we just realized it needed to be a focus team to give these buildings the best possible. Um way of of putting this together. Um I've accountability, I don't see this as. As a private thing at all. We are all elected. We're all public. Uh accountability lies in what's written in our bylaws, our mission statement and the articles of incorporation. And that doesn't change with uh who's elected in the city council. Uh you know, you could get the wrong people in there. It's still a matter of who's who's voting who into what. Um we're, we are the will of people. We all are. Uh I feel we're still a a a very much into the same interests for making this. These historical buildings, something that's going to be an asset to Placerville, to El Dorado County, to the public, to the community. So um I'm just in favor of this whole thing and I'm looking forward to working with. In tight, because like I say, I I'm I'm part of both things. I'm part of the Historical Society and I'm a member of eighteen forty-eight and I believe in this project. So uh you know, I'm looking forward to working with the city and doing something good in my community.
Thank you very much.
Laurel Brumbrum, go ahead. Laurel Brumbrum, go ahead.
Oh geez, I didn't know that I'd actually pushed the unmute button. I, I think that there are valid points on both sides of this issue. And I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking for the chamber, I have to qualify that, because we have not had the opportunity to really evaluate and take a position. So I'm speaking for myself individually. And I'd like to say that on Tuesday, I would like very much for as many people that have opinions to be in attendance at this meeting, to give the first opportunity for the public to be heard. And give, give the board of supervisors a broader view of the options and, and the opportunities. So, thank you for having this meeting tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Laurel.
Ruth, go ahead.
Thank you. It just took me a minute to unmute. I wanted to thank Cleve and Dennis and Chris for your presentations. And also Dennis, I wanted to thank you for calling this meeting, so that we could all have an opportunity to discuss this. I've taken some notes as you all spoke, and they're in no particular order, it's kind of a laundry list, but I'm gonna go down them. I don't quite understand this first time for hearing about this group, eighteen forty-eight, previously historical group, and their proposal. I've heard it many times. I, maybe we attend different meetings, but I listen into planning commission meetings, I listen into board of supervisors meetings, and this is not anything new, anything mysterious, anything unheard about. I have known about this, and so I'd like to really clarify this. This is not any cloak and dagger kind of situation. This has been made very clear. Sue Taylor has spoken about this at several meetings, and I've heard that. So let's just clear the air on that one. I also want to say that I would really like us to give a little more credit to the county and their process. I respect the county and their process. I participate in both county and city meetings, and I've watched procedures. And I have to say that the county has their act together, and is really quite professional. And look, they put some bids out, you did your best. This reminds me quite a bit of when we did have the arts people and the Pumnus Nisanon tribe both put in bids, and we know how that all turned out. Now the shoe is on the other foot. You have put your bids in twice. For whatever reason, you didn't perform, you did not win. I don't know the details, closed session, whatever, but you didn't perform, and they like the other group better. I think it has to be accepted. They have a process of evaluating. I am going to give them the credit, that they would not give this to any fly-by-night group. Okay, so I'm just saying that I, I respect the, the county's process, even without knowing all the detail, but they seem like a pretty professional group to me. Let's see, how much time do I have? Thirty-five seconds, geez. I guess the other thing is arts and culture, to date, I've not been impressed by their performance. They've been in that building for a long time, albeit, yes, a year it was COVID, but you guys are still trying to figure out your plans, get an MOU for the design, find an architect, the clock is ticking. I don't have trust in the group, I'm sorry. I own an art gallery, you think I'd be for the arts, but this particular group under this particular leadership, and now you want to expand it to more buildings. I haven't seen performance. And you're worried about another group, which I am familiar with their performance. And I have more faith in them than I do the Arts Council following through with all of these plans for making a cultural center.
Thank you, Ruth.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Good evening. I, I have been in on all of the stuff since the beginning of when the courthouse was being discussed, and these buildings were being discussed, and the ketchup and mustard buildings were being discussed, and all of the back and forth that's gone on with those. And it came to light that these really are owned by the county. And it seems to me like the last thing Placerville needs is two more buildings with failing roofs that need a lot of work to try to figure out what to do with in our budget. I'm not sure where we came up with the idea we had a hundred thousand dollars to even bid for them. But I didn't see anything about that in our budget. I think perhaps it's time to let go and let somebody else try it. They can't, I mean, it can't go a lot worse than the much of ketchup and mustard buildings that've gone. So why not let this other group do it? Sounds like they have a good proposal, and it sounds like they have good ideas and good people, and the financial backing to go ahead and fix the roofs and fix the buildings. We're still trying to get ketchup and mustard buildings up to code, and it hasn't happened yet. So I think it's time to let go and realize the city of Placerville doesn't really need to own every single building that is a public building in all of Placerville. But it's okay to let the county do what they have proposed to do. If it turns out badly, we can step in then. But I think for now, we would be best to back off and say, okay, go ahead, see what you can do with this. Because their plans sound like it would be really good, the gold panning was a success. And so they have proven that they can run something. So let's let them go for it. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Sue.
Jen C., go ahead.
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me?
You bet. Thank you.
Oh, great. You know, I just think, you know, we are fortunate to have, you know, these, these other organizations, and we know that they have deep roots. And I just think it's exciting that we're going to have, you know, more, more of these partners involved. I appreciate the gesture of, you know, looking for ways that there can be cooperation, because yes, they, they are in a shared district. I know you all call it a cultural district, it's clearly also a historic district. But I just want to say that, you know, so many of the things that the Arts Council was talking about can be done in other buildings and other spaces, and aren't necessarily tied to these historic buildings being an essential component. And I just hope we can, you know, as, as we're envisioning all the possibilities, I mean, I would love them to have a massive complex on, say, Placerville Drive as well for the arts. I mean, you know, I just think the possibilities, you know, for what they're talking about, you know, offer some possibilities for these other corridors, you know, Placerville and Upper Broadway, where we know we need a lot of creative energy. I just want to say, I, you know, I think that there are, well, just on, even on the art piece, I appreciate that Chris Payne drew attention to that mural. That mural is a really special thing, that nineteen forty-one Forest Genetics painting that talks about, you know, the forest timber industry, and even references the Placerville Nursery. This is a really important, you know, resource-based part of our, you know, our whole history and community. And I didn't even hear the Arts Council being in art, you know, calling attention to this incredible mural, which is public art. You know, this is a WPA New Deal, you know, building, and they weren't talking about those things, which, you know, that's what I'm saying is, this organization is going to, I think, focus on some of the, the things about the asset that are very specific, site-specific to that asset. And I just think arts and culture can do some of those things in other places, and I hope we can find places for it and have it all exist. I do think that there were things with, with the city's collaboration with Arts and Council Eldorado, that all the grant writing that went on with the NEA, National Endowment for the Arts, there was, you know, a lot of activity and collaboration going on between the city and the Arts Council that was not, you know, being talked about in, you know, in the city council meetings. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes collaboration going on. And I just hope that, you know, you'll be forthright about that as well. And I just want to key into that word sovereignty, that Cleve was talking about the sovereignty of the city, and just mention the tribe again, because I really hope that is going to prevail. You know, we have a lot of attention on tribal things these days now with Department of Interior and so forth. And their package is pretty compelling as far as their acknowledgement, they should be recognized as a tribe. And I believe they will have some sovereignty then as a tribe that we will hopefully all recognize. Anyway, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Thomas, for providing this opportunity to.
Thank you for the gesture of president, but let's just go with the mayor for now.
Sorry.
Maybe next year.
Yeah. Mayor Thomas, thank you for providing this opportunity for me to learn more about this situation. The first thing I'd like to say is that, you know, my first concern is that those buildings are empty. And I would like to see them being used and productive to our community. Because I have seen, you know, buildings that have sat empty on our Main Street, and I think that's a problem. My concern is the lack of transparency. I know people say that there's been tons of transparency, but my building, I own the property, that's, I'm probably the closest non-governmental building to that property other than Round Table Pizza, which is corporately owned and run. But I'm probably the closest to that. And this is really, up until Chris Payne called me a couple months ago, that this was happening, it was the first time I'd even heard that there was a group that was, that had been, at that point, I heard they were already awarded it. So I feel that there has not been a public vetting on this issue. And I just feel that I am pretty tied in with the community. I serve on Peak. I'm on the board, on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. And I just don't feel like there has been a lot of insight. I was on the Blue Ribbon Committee for these buildings originally, and I have not heard, maybe some people don't want to talk to me, I don't know, but I have not heard a hide or hair of this issue until at this point, other than the call I got from Chris a couple months ago, and I wish I appreciated. My, I would like to see, they kind of go back to have more vetting, so that the public, which is really, this is public property, to have a better say on the use of it. I am a little concerned. I know most of the people on this Eldorado Gold eighteen forty-eight organization, but I am concerned about some precedence of at least one of the members. And that is, as much as I'm proud that the Herrick Building looks great now, but it took seven years, because it's been, I bought my building at the same time that building was awarded to the owners. And it took them years to get that to any kind of, really, until now. The soda shop was just a partial, and now it looks like they have a restaurant coming in there, so that we'll finally have some use out of that building. I'd hate to see these buildings go through that same process. So I am a little concerned about the precedence there, from at least one of the participants in this organization. So I hope that we could find a mutual agreement there, so we could get use in there. But I do have concerns with this organization that's taking it over from precedence. So thank you for your time and for providing this platform tonight.
Thank you, Adam.
Mandy Rodriguez, go ahead.
Hey, everybody. You know, I live right downtown. I live very close. I don't know how many feet away from these buildings, but I'll count it next time I walk down there. Mr. Mayor, your letter insinuates that some random people wanted to do something with these two buildings. We all know who they are. They've been in this community for a long time. So I just, it's kind of insulting as somebody who lives feet steps away, right? And I own my house too, so let me clarify that. You know, you say that you, this is for some nonprofit, but let's be real, the city wants to give these to a actual nonprofit, which is the Cultural Arts Center. When you look at the cultural master plan for these buildings, they're kind of laughable. But she was really good at writing grants. She put all the buzzwords in, like equality, culture, sustainability, agriculture, strategic plan, housing. What do those words do? They get money. I call this a grant hustle. This is a grant hustle. The cultural arts is a grant hustle. That building has sat empty for a year. Where are the arts? Where are they? I'd like to see them. I've seen other arts studios sit empty, but they still have art in the window. Are we not gonna talk about this person who came from Pasadena after four hundred thousand dollars of misappropriated funds? Oh, is that an insult? No, no, no.
Well, no, I think you better, I think you're treading on.
I'm not insulting. I'm not insulting. I didn't bring up a name, Dennis. Don't cut me off. That is a violation of the Brown Act.
You know.
Violation of the Brown Act. Thank you for being transparent regarding conflict of interest. You didn't leave out that you're married to the supervisor that will be voting on this. You and her book. Stop. Not insulting you. I'm calling out facts, Mr. Mayor. So basically, you called a special meeting to plead to the county. You said this wasn't a public hearing, but yet it is a public hearing, because in your letter, you said you wanted community input. I'm in the community, and I've given you my input. Please quit cutting me off. The nonprofit that is trying to take over these buildings has a contract with the county that they cannot sell. So they're not just gonna get this building and then mess it up and turn it over to somebody else. So that's false. I would like you, when this is over, to go back and listen to what you said, Mr. Mayor. What you said in, in your opening statements is so embarrassing as a person who voted for you. I'm just disgusted. So thanks. I won't claim my ten seconds you cut me off for.
Thank you, Mandy.
Yeah, thanks.
Just as a point of clarification, we will not be giving, if, if we were to prevail, and I'm not saying that we will, and that that's not where I'm going, we will not be giving the, we would not be giving the buildings to Arts and Culture Eldorado. Or if we were working with the eighteen forty, we wouldn't be giving to them. It would be maintained under the city control. And so, thank you very much. I just need to make that clarification. Mister, go ahead, Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Clarici, go ahead.
All right. John, if you could unmute yourself there.
We can come back to him and move to the next one. Barbara Rogers, go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening. You know, when I first read the staff report.
Barbara, we lost you there. Looks like she popped up again.
Sorry about that, Dennis. Anyway, as I was saying, when I first read this staff report, I really wanted to be able to tell you guys, wow, I think the county kind of did not act in good faith. But after hearing Chris speak and what this is all about, I just have to tell you, I fully support this because of the fact they want to preserve the history. And I know you guys want to lean towards a cultural arts center, which, but for me, it's always kind of been stuck in my craw about the old City Hall. And you guys know why, because of my association with the fire department. I mean, I've only been here forty-four years, but I love your community, and I love the history. And I just really had wished that the city could have really turned City Hall into a fire museum. Because my fear is years from now, no one's even gonna know about the wonderful Placerville Volunteer Fire Department. But I owe the city of Placerville and those people that hired me at the fire department my career and an opportunity to live in this county, and to give my kids a chance and my grandkids to grow up here. So I just want to put my two cents in, that I believe in preserving the history. And I think the city's missing the boat by not grabbing onto that more. But I wish you luck in your endeavor. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, we'll come, come back.
It doesn't look like you clicked on him, because. It doesn't look like you clicked on him, because I don't see his volume, his-
I'm allowing him to talk, but yeah, it's-
Okay.
Terry Lamontec, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
We can, Terry. Thank you.
You bet. Terry Lamontec, Executive Director of Arts and Culture El Dorado. I'm not going to go over the details of the cultural district project. As you know, I've made five public presentations on the project, and most everyone is familiar with the details. I would like to correct one misstatement that I heard tonight, having to do with the historic mural. It does feature prominently in our proposal, and it would be carefully conserved, properly lit, and an informational plaque would be added for the benefit of all to enjoy the mural. So I did want to correct that. I am, however, making comment in support of the city of Placerville's position regarding the former DA buildings. The Board of Directors of Arts and Culture El Dorado joins me in expressing our profound concern that the wishes of the city are being ignored and overruled by the county regarding the use of these buildings. The civic assets should be put to their highest and best use for the residents of Placerville on a daily basis, daytime and evening, with opportunities for collaboration and creative expression that support and showcase everything that is special about El Dorado County. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Dolly, go ahead.
Hi, Dolly Wager. Mr. Mayor, Council members, I appreciate you pulling together this meeting. I must admit, I knew very little about this prior to this meeting, because when I heard about it the first time, it was a done deal that they had awarded it to the Historical Society, which was, I thought was very odd. When I heard it was being re-released and we were asked to bring another proposal to them or revise our proposal, I was very glad to hear it. But I may have heard it wrong, but it sounded to me like the day they submitted it was the same day that you found out that they had awarded it to this new group, which leads me to believe that there was no time to really review this proposal. So I may have heard that wrong, but that is what I thought I heard. My concerns, one of the first concerns that I wrote is, Chris had said that it's dependent on rents, contributions, and grants. Grant writing, and frankly, someone else spoke to this. Grant writing is not an easy process. It's not a cheap process. If you're going to get grants, yes, I'm sorry, you do have to have the hustle, because there's a lot of people competing for that. And if you don't have that, you're not going to get it. And it concerns me that there are no grants in place yet for this, because it's one thing to get the building, it's one thing to fix the roof. My concern, all along with any building on Main Street, whether it's the courthouse, the ketchup and mustard, was how do you intend to maintain the building? What is your long-term plan of sustainability? That is my concern there. The gold panning was a complete success. I agree with that. But that was one thing that happens. How often? We have an existing museum on Main Street. I'd like to see the studies of how much traffic. It's been a very difficult year downtown for restaurants and retail. How much traffic is this going to bring to Main Street? If you bring a bunch of kids down to Main Street to go to the museum, they're not going to the restaurants and retail. I think it's important that we study this, and I think it's important that the county look at this and look at that plan. This is on Main Street. This is downtown. First refusal should go to the city on this property. And if not, I want to make sure that the city asks for a construction bond and an existing bond on this to make sure that we're not left with a falling apart building if, God forbid, they fail. If they get it, I wish them the best and that they succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Michael.
Hey, so just to take note that right now, this is a public hearing on the side of Brown Act and all. It's not that you're being gracious to let us all give our opinion. This is actually a public hearing. So when has the city actually asked its taxpayers if they'd like to spend $100,000 plus-plus on old buildings that need work? Public buildings require outrageous extra costs, prevailing wage, other restrictions and requirements. The not-for-profit doesn't have these restrictions. The city tried to sell Old City Hall because it is old, needs a lot of work, and will be expensive. And Member Barelli should remember this. She voted to sell Old City Hall before she voted against it. The Arts Council's plan for these buildings were publicly divided. You cannot say the Arts Council's plan for these, the old post office mannequins, were a overwhelming yes. They were challenged. It sounds like the city still doesn't understand the state law regarding a jurisdiction getting rid of buildings. They're supposed to go out to open bid for proposal. And it just kind of looks like the city did not get it together and present a top plan in time. For Chris Payne and Company, the 1848, these are local heroes. Their plan is absolutely amazing, and I fully support it to showcase our history. And I hereby volunteer my skills and expertise in restoring historic buildings on Main Street. I've done the Herrick and Hangman Buildings, the Arch Saloon, a couple others. So they now have me on board, and it'll get done. As for Old City Hall, I agree with Sue Rodman. The Arts Council, on the surface, does not seem to have done anything noticeable with Old City Hall since they've been in control. The city cannot afford two more old buildings needing work and unable by law to accept volunteer work on public buildings, whereas the not-for-profit can. And where again, did the city ask its taxpayers if they're willing and okay with spending $100,000 plus-plus on a couple of old buildings that need serious work? The city should not waste any more time and money pursuing the old post office. Let the superior plan of the 1848 group go forward, and let the city coffers overflow with a new rebirth of historical preservation in Placerville, Old Hangtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
John Clarici, go ahead.
Can you?
Okay.
Oh, we have them. All right.
I'm going to get, okay, all righty. Anyway, okay. This has nothing to do with the proposal that's on the table by the history folks. Sorry, I think I just rang your phone, Dennis. Stop that. Okay, I've rang several phones. Okay, this has nothing to do with that. There are certain people that were listed in the names of people that are supporting this organization, God bless you all, that would scream like stuck pigs if their roles were reversed. They would be screaming about transparency, and why didn't the public get to be involved in this? And they would be doing all that stuff, and we all know it, so let's just get away from that. The fact of the matter is, these are public assets. They are owned by a public entity, and whatever, you know, tax code that this group, 1848, is organized under is irrelevant. The fact of the matter is, is that it will go away from that. And with all due respect to the one lady who's, I guess, on the Historical Society, being elected to the Historical Society Board is not like being a Board of Supervisor or a City Council member. Those are two entirely different things, and we shouldn't get them confused. I think that at the very minimum, the county should give this some public airing. We should just know exactly what's in the proposal for these two buildings, whether if they go to this organization or not. We should know what's going on. These are going to be very expensive things to take care of. And I'm not convinced, because nobody knows, we have, this group has the wherewithal. I have no doubt they have a lot of people poison-ready. Apparently, Mike Drobich has volunteered his help in all of this. We would all help in all of this, but we need to know more about what's going on. And so I think that it would be incumbent on the Board of Supervisors, and every one of those people, every one of those supervisors know, if this was happening in their district, they would be going crazy right now, because they would never stand for this. And the folks that live in those districts would not stand for this. As much as we might like this idea of having another museum in town, this needs a full public airing. That's my personal feeling about it. And by the way, I think the only collaboration that we did with, at the time, the Arts Council was, I believe, we wrote them a letter of support when they went after that grant. This idea that the city was working hand and glove with them and helping them out at the deference of everyone else on the planet is not true. The Arts Council actually went out and got all that money themselves, and they got some, they got a letter from us. They also did a lot of due diligence when they were putting their plan together. I was approached before mustard and ketchup was even a glimmer in their eye to talk about their plan. We just found out from Chris, from the parking lot, I love that part of this, by the way, from the parking lot, what they're planning to do. And I'm sorry, and I was, I donated, by the way, I was a donor to the gold panning championships. They ain't the same. This is going to be a hard slog. Fixing these buildings, keeping them going, getting money to operate them is going to be difficult. Anyway, I'm sorry I ran six minutes over. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
Love to all of you.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no others, we'll give it just a moment. All right, looks like we got a couple more.
Lexi Boger, go ahead.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
All right. Wow, I wasn't planning on speaking, and I'm kind of overwhelmed, you know, by this situation, but I think that as a person who has been in this with, in the process with my fellow Placavillians for years, I want to say four years, we've been working on this. I've been on the Blue Ribbon Committee. I have been in agriculture, working in this. I appreciate that the Arts Council has been the professional, organized, legitimate player all along, setting the example of how we try to do things in the city for economic development and cultural development. We have a group of people that time and again get in the ring to compete and lose because they cannot legitimately show that they can economically support what they want to do. They cannot get the public support for what they want to do. And this is basically an end zone, under-the-table, Hail Mary attempt to go through the county to get what they want. And I think, as a person who's born and raised here, I'm just tired of seeing potential in this county and having it derailed by these backdoor, you know, maneuvers. I am shocked that the county had a closed-session deal where there was no transparency. I mean, thank you to the city of Placerville for being painfully transparent in this process with all of us for the last four years. And the county to just have a closed-door session where they hand over, and I don't know what this is. Is this a good-old-boy deal? Is this a who-knows-who? We don't even know, because we don't know anything about it. I just, I'm sickened. I just want to give you guys the support to say, please, you know, argue your case. You have first right of refusal, and I just think you guys need to fight for the city to have the county come back to the table and act and behave in an ethical, moral way. So I hope you guys really do send them a letter that just states your rightful position in this process that they have lost good faith in. Anyways, best, last, luck to you guys.
Thank you. I would, I would just like to state that, that while it was stated that there were potential backdoor deals, I'm not aware of any backdoor deals. I believe that the county has operated honorably, and, but I just don't agree with their process from my perspective. I just want to put that out there, because that, I don't know that there's facts to back that up. So, thank you. This will come.
Uncle Fuzzy, go ahead.
Hello, folks. How are you? Patty, Tara, Dennis, are you still there? No, he's in 256. Hey, I just want to clarify a few points real quick. This organization was actually incorporated by El Dorado Gold 2016, paid for it, and I did all the work to do it. When that was done, I kind of selected, talked to folks that were involved in the community, knew what they were doing, had an expertise. It's kind of like when I did the gold panning thing. And Patty will remember, she was part of that, how we ran that. And I was told I was completely crazy when that started. Well, I guess I wasn't crazy, and to refer to John, it took a lot of work, my friend. It took about five years to make that deal come together. And, you know, you still go around the world, and we still represent El Dorado County in Placerville, and they still talk about Placerville. So as far as getting notification around the world, great thing, folks. One of the, one of the things that came up, and I'd like to go over it real quick, is what are we going to do? That's a question. My vision, and I've had this vision for a long time. I want to go get that gold that was taken from us by the state of California. We have to use Frank Bigelow to help bring it back. There's a big safe in there. We want to be able to showcase those artifacts that belong to the El Dorado County. And there's no place else safe in this county to put it without putting it in Bank of America, so. You know, and to go along with that, we want to be able to, and I say we, there's a group of us. You know who the group is now. We want to be able to make this an all-encompassing museum, a hands-on for the kid, a mini exploratory, so where they can come and touch things. Because you know, you get little kids, even up to high school age, touching and feeling and smelling and being able to see the texture. You know, that's what it's about. I teach gold panning at a lot of the schools, and that's what they want to see. They want to see, they want to touch the rock. They want to touch the piece of machinery. They want to do those type of things. And yes, it's going to be a long process. And, you know, I started thinking about this in 2016, but the city had the first right of refusal. And folks knew I was interested in this, and when the city bowed out, and according to a November 17th City Council meeting from the Planning Commission, they said it was a great idea. In other words, I think you guys backed up. How you got back in, don't know. But, you know, in closing, I just want to stress the fact that this is something not just for the county, not just for the city. This is something for all the people of El Dorado County and all the people that will come up and down Main Street. If the kids come, who do they bring with them? Mom and dads? If they come back, look how many people come back to go Bug Park. Why don't we tie that all in together? Why don't we work with the culture people? You know, I'm for that. Okay, I'll wrap it up. I'll wrap it up real quick, yes. And so in closing, you know, it's a great idea. Oh, by the way, there is a deed restriction. If we don't perform, like we say we're going to perform, the county gets it back. Just think, the roof will be fixed.
All right.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
First of all, I have to say that Lexi Boger said everything that I would have liked to have said tonight. And I have to say that Bob Edwards, who passed away last weekend, many, many of you may be- Bob Edwards, who passed away last weekend, many, many of you maybe know him. He was a wonderful person. And after I first got elected to the City Council, Bob told me you disagree with people on some things and you agree with them on other. And with Lexi, I disagreed with her on the winery sign, but I agree with her tonight. I'm a former teacher at Gold Trail School, and above that, I'm a resident of Placerville. I'm really passionate about Placerville. I was also a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee. And I was a member of the first Blue Ribbon Committee about what to do with City Hall. And the committee agreed upon that the city should keep it, not sell it. And even if the city has tried to sell it, the committee recommended that they keep it. I think the city should have had the first right of refusal on this project. As anyone who is active in the committee, in the community, as someone who is active in the community, I did not hear about this until last night. I, I have no idea why. And it should have been more out there. Adam Anderson, who lives right across the street from the courthouse, not lives, but has his office there, he should have been notified by the county. They should have had to notify everybody within three hundred feet. I see they have a proposal, and they've thrown everything in it but the kitchen sink. I feel that there's a group of people who are unhappy with whatever the city has done. And in a way, that this is just a way for them to get even. The city and the community have committed to a cultural arts center for the benefit of the residents, the community, and tourists. It should be alive and welcoming to all, not just to tourists. We don't need to just Nevada City. I remember years ago, my grandparents lived there when I was a kid. I remember when someone said the first, the last place in the city that serves residents closed, it was the pharmacy. So I just have to say above all, I think the sovereignty of the city is so important. If the city's proposal is competitive and public, it should trump all other endeavors. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, zero, one, zero, go ahead.
I am unmuted. That's what it said. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
You can hear me. Okay, great. This is Lisa Pardekezi. I'm the presenter on the mustard and ketchup building RFP in 2019. And I'd like to get some things across here. First of all, I'm with the Wampeumne tribe. Everybody, you'd like to say hi to the city council?
Hello there.
Yeah, so anyway, we, one of the things I'd like to explain is that the RFP, the city was engaged with a contract with the Arts Council prior to the RFP being released. They were engaged with the Arts Council to receive a grant of thirty-five thousand dollars and then one hundred thousand dollars. So the city was already slanted towards the Arts Council prior to even the tribe presenting their slide presentation. The Arts Council was already on their second presentation by time May sixth. And by time it was found out that there was a problem with the RFP, that the Arts Council actually was illegally participating because they were already in a joint contract with the city. So even though today, everybody believes that the mustard and ketchup building was awarded to the Arts Council, in fact, that that is a contract that is pretty much null and void because that was an illegal RFP because of a prior contract the city has with the Arts Council. If the city is worried about where to put the Arts Council, they could always put them in that shopping center on Upper Broadway that they happen to own that's across from the tribe's sacred site. Take a look, you'll find out. There's plenty of room up there for the Arts Council to do whatever they need to do on the city's dollar. So anyway, have a good evening and we'll be looking forward to the further discussions on this matter. And we hope that the project that as described will go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tracy Doyle, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, council members and community, I'm community members. So I just want to say I'm in support of moving forward with the county in the way this the deal is now, and I believe it's already in escrow, so I was wondering how you guys would expect the county to just back out of the deal at this point, but I could be incorrect on that, and I am joining the meeting wait. I want to say thank you, Dennis, for responding to Lexi's accusations of backdoor deals. I think that was a very nefarious thing for her to say. And it's kind of comical to think that Sue Taylor would be getting favoritism up around here. So that's kind of funny, Lexi. I think that the Art Council, in my opinion, is a cancel culture tool. If you look at their mission, it's all about cultural tourism and making it more livable here. So I'm not really sure what that organization even really does. It certainly doesn't add value to me or anyone I know. I'm pretty sure it's, you know, what even goes on there? So I know there's art classes and therapy. I'm not really sure, but I think we're treading in dangerous waters when the government starts getting involved in cultural things. Because culture, you know, there's some of us that want to preserve history, and then there's people like Lexi that want to rewrite history and make it more friendly to, I don't know, people that come wine tasting from out of the area. I'm not really sure what she wants to cancel today, but so anyway, that's just what I, my thoughts are to keep it where it's going. I also think it's comical to think that any project involving Sue Taylor would become like a dilapidated building. Because everybody has seen a phenomenal job she did on the Hennet Building, and we should be lucky to have her take part in any project in any part of this county. I just also want to add that museums do attract people. We have a huge sector of the population homeschooling now. And I homeschooled my kids and we used to go to the Stockton Children's Museum, and I can tell you, I would have never thought to go to Stockton for any other reason before that. I mean, it attracted me there, and then I spent money and went to restaurants. So I think a museum is a wonderful asset, and it would preserve our culture, and we do already have cultural tourism. Historical culture tourism, historical cultural tourism, and I think we need to protect, preserve, and value that. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And it's unfortunate that the last caller used disparaging comments towards Lexi when she was trying to make her point. I, I, I know that she has no, no foundation or basis for making those claims against Lexi as well, and we discourage and really, we discourage and we don't tolerate personal attacks. And so with that, I apologize, Lexi, that I did not cut that off sooner. And at the same time, we need to keep it to the issue that we have here, and let's go ahead. It looks like we have no further public comments, and we're going to bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions? Or Chris Painter eighteen forty-eight? All right, see, I just, any comments, points of discussion? You're based on public comments and such, do you have any feedback?
I have a question. There was, there was a
Something was getting rustled around there. If you could state your question again.
Yeah, one commenter mentioned that there was some performance metrics built in, and if eighteen forty-eight did not perform, the buildings would go back to the county. And I was just wondering what those metrics were and what the timeline for performance was.
Did, did you want me to respond to that or Chris Payne?
You know the answer or maybe Chris?
I, I do not. I know that the, the formal agreement has not been signed yet. It's my understand or approved by the board. The formal agreement, as my understanding is, is to be set to be approved next Tuesday. So there is no formal agreement approved yet that's been public, so I haven't seen that. I have heard that perhaps there is language in there that it could revert back to the county, but I don't know. You're welcome to ask Chris to
If you could mute yourself and answer just that question, I would appreciate if you have the answer to that.
I, I do have the answer to that. Cleve is correct. The, the action that the Board of Supervisors is going to take, it's going to be an open session. I, I saw it just a little while ago. It could be changed before Friday. That's when addendums have to be in. But essentially, to your answer to your question, Kara, the, the county's contracts are quite elaborate. They're no different than the cities. There's a lot of, there's a lot of clauses in there that protect the county's interest as the city would do if they had a, had a contract. So this is a purchase and sale agreement, and it stipulates things like money due. It talks about what constitutes us not performing. But, but the county is, is very, very diligent through their county council's office and writing quite an extensive agreement. And so I wouldn't be too concerned about that aspect of it. And we're not concerned. We believe the one thing, I think one of the speakers says was, we're also counting on donors. There is a large of donors that can, that can provide you money. So anyway, go ahead.
Are you, are you familiar with the met, I think the question was, do you know what the metrics are?
In, in terms of, what is, what does that mean, Dennis, in terms of, what do you mean by term metric?
Well, someone, I think Councilmember Taylor was asking the question that somebody referenced metrics that would have to be, or benchmarks that you would have to meet, that your organization would have to meet. Are you aware of what those benchmarks are in order to be compliant with the contract?
We have to take care and we have to preserve the buildings. Therefore, we got to make sure that the roofs are taken care of. We, that's our responsibility. We're assuming, we're assuming these buildings as, as is. That's, that was stipulated. So we're, we're not able to discuss anything that we don't like about it. We're taking them as is. And so the goal is, is that once we get the keys, which essentially, if everything goes all right, it'll be next Friday, a week from Friday. We, we would then be responsible for getting contractor in there to take care of the, of the roofs immediately. I, I believe if we didn't do that, then we would be against that clause, Kara, that they've put in there about our performance. But let me just say, Kara, it's easier now than it was yesterday. Because if you go to the Board of Supervisors' agenda now, that, that agreement is in there. So any clause that you might have where you want more information, the agreement's now posted, please. It is posted, so.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, so Dennis, can I just say one more thing related to the deal? Okay. First of all, as I said earlier, some of you may not, some of the speakers may have not heard me. This is a very rigid and, and complex process. And, and I pulled my hair out and had sleepless nights related to making, making the conditions happen. There is an escrow account with, with, with placard title that was set up. And if you wanted, Dennis, and I know you don't want me to, but I just want to let you know I could. I have the timeline here of everything that we've done eighteen forty-eight to get we are, to get to where we are right now. And we have substantially completed every condition except, and that included signing the purchase and sale agreement, except the board taking the final action and authorizing the purchase and sale agreement to be signed by the chair. And that's supposed to happen next, next Tuesday. So the context is, is that we've done everything that we need to do. We have a strong administrative record. If you know what that, those two terms are administrative record. We have a strong administrative record that's tied to a timeline. And anybody that wants to talk to me, I'm always available.
Thank you, Chris. Please hang tight there, too. Go ahead and re-mute yourself. Yes, Patty.
I, I cannot tell you how confused I am about this whole process. I don't understand. What Chris just said is that they have been pursuing purchasing these buildings for, in a for a long time, it sounded like he was saying to me. And yet, we have been, as a city, we've been told nothing according to our city manager, Cleve Morris, and I certainly believe him. When was, why was all this done without us being made aware of it? And then why did the county come back and ask us a second time to participate? And that wasn't too long ago. So maybe, I mean, Chris said, yes, you'll give us the timeline, but I don't get it. I, I'm just stymied. As to, and I also, right now, want to throw in that I was not in agreement to sell Old City Hall. You can ask John Driscoll. He used, they all, everyone used to laugh at me because I was the only holdout for not wanting to sell it, but that's neither here nor there. I just wanted to make that correction. Anyway, maybe Cleve can fill me in on something, but in my confused state, help me understand this.
Well, let, let me try to answer as many questions as I can. I, I, I agree. I was a little bit surprised that I didn't, I wasn't aware that eighteen forty-eight, I'll call them to shorten their name, was interesting, the buildings as far back as, as apparently they were, but that's neither here nor there. I want to, I want to emphasize a couple of things. We we met every requirement in submitting our proposal that we were asked to do. We were always on time. We submitted a letter from the very beginning. Then when the county made us aware of the buildings, we submitted a letter expressing our interest in the buildings. And we can produce that letter if you'd like to see that. Somebody made a statement that for some reason the city backed out. I want to emphasize, the city has never backed out of this process. We're still there today. And it may be a done deal, and I'll admit that based on my conversations with county staff. But we never backed out. There was a statement made that I, I've heard this a couple of times. It's kind of irrelevant to this process, but it was made that for some reason that the city owns the old shopping center up on Broadway. Boy, I wish we owned that so that we could actually do something with it, because the owner is absolutely not in, not in favor of doing anything with that shopping center. So I want to clarify that the city of Placerville does not own that shopping center. I'd be happy to put any of the public in in, connect, connect them with the actual owner. I've spoken to him many times. The last thing I just want to clarify is the hundred thousand dollars that the city proposed, that funding was to come, was an agreement. We had a letter agreement with the Arts Council that they would provide that funding to the city. So the city was not going to be out that one hundred thousand dollars in the process. I think that's most of the things. I mean, there was talk about, and there's been talk that the city is going to destroy. If we got the buildings, the city and the Arts Council would destroy the mural. Terry Lamont talked to that, but in our proposal specifically says preservation of the building and the mural are important to us. So all of those things are not true statements, so we would destroy the mural or destroy the buildings. So I think that's answered the main questions that came out that I wanted to just provide some clarification on. Patty, I, I don't have all the timeline the way Chris talked about it. I think he may have more than I did, because I think the county has had more communication with them than they have with us on this issue, so.
And, and there again, my question is why? Why were we not afforded the same, you know, if all this was going on, why were we not brought into those conversations? I, I just don't get it. I'm sorry.
This, this may go back to as far as, is Supervisor Veerkamp. When he was there and he was working with Uncle Fuzzy, and I know they worked close with the, with the gold panning championship program too. So there, there's certainly connections there, and I'm not saying those are bad connections. I'm just saying that those are connections that are there. And, and so those, those, those connections are there.
I worked on that gold panning committee too. I represented the city. I, I agree with Dolly Wager when she said, yeah, it was a great success, but it was promoted. And I, I, I agree with Dolly Wager when she said, yeah, it was a great success, but it was promoted as a one-time thing. And the, if the folks that are trying to use that as a, uh, to me, uh, holding that up. As an example of how they can raise funds, there, there's two different, th- these are oranges and apples, raising funding for that gold panning. You know, situation than these buildings. Um, they, they don't compare.
Kara.
I had a question.
Can't hear you, Kara.
I was wondering, um, and this might be a question for Christine, um, or another one of the board members that are present in the audience, but I was wondering if it's possible for. The public to see the proposal um, for these, their proposal for the building. It's been nice to hear about them for the first time um, today, um, but to see a full proposal, is there any way for that to be public?
Chris, if you could answer that question.
Um, of Kara, the, the proposals are in the hands of the county. Until the county takes action, or until the discussion occurs. Um, we're not liberty, because all we've had is closed sessions, and we're not, we're not part of the closed sessions. So w- we did the best and last offer, just like the city did. Best and last offer, Cleve alluded to that earlier. It's the, it's, that was the last chance for any of us, the city included, to make any changes to what had been originally proposed. And we did it, and the city did it. And, and now, and now until, I'm, I'm just saying, I'd be. I'd be willing to give it to you the moment that the county does, does their action. But, but I'm not at liberty to do that, because I don't have the authority to do that.
I'm, I'm less interested in the specific offer and more on just your feasibility study for the, like, your vision of the project.
Well, first of all, I just tried to emphasize that donors are also involved with this. I've been meeting with potential donors, and these are substantial amounts of money, retirement accounts that they have to draw from. That are going to participate in this almost immediately. I think the idea of the Gold Panning World Championship and its success. Was that I was impressed with how people came together, um, everybody that was involved with that.
All right, Chris, I, I don't want every question to turn into another. I appreciate your, I appreciate your willingness to talk more. Um, I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna catch you short there, just to.
You want me to, Dennis, you want me to mute again? You want me to mute?
Could you mute yourself, Chris?
Okay, I'm muted.
All right, thank you. Um, any, any uh, further questions or discussion?
Did we, Dennis, could we ask Cleve um, to, to tell us what his proposal was? I mean, did he? Other than the, the money offer, uh, Cleve, did you go into detail about what was planned? Did you? Bring the Arts Council uh, renderings, um, you know, um.
I can show you this, this is our proposal.
Okay.
That we sent. Um, and it, it has our, our proposal for funding in the very beginning, and then it goes completely through the Arts Council's. Uh, presentation, basically with the drawings, et cetera, for the buildings, the entire document that was provided. Um, to the, actually on two different occasions, the first time and the second time to the county.
And that has been out in the public forum as well.
Correct. It's basically the same thing that was presented regarding uh, the, uh, our historic uh, City Hall buildings. So it has all of the detail in there, and it's been open for review.
Yeah, and I, and I believe that the um, you know, the question that the Councilmember Taylor posed is that. Can we see it? Because we haven't seen it, and the answer is no. The answer was no, and, and that. And that's unfortunate. Um, you know, I don't know that it's gonna, it's gonna make a decision, make a. A, a decision one way or the other. I feel like the city has been, um, I can't think of the right word right now. I just, I uh, but uh, it, it's disingenuous to put together a proposal that's right in the heart of our city. And not actually bring it to the, to the city and bring it to us, and uh. I say that in the same, in the, in the same uh, breath, you know, I, if there's an opportunity to work together that. You know, I hope we can go down that road as well, but uh, it's, you know, but to be honest, and, and to reflect on uh, Councilmember Taylor's. Question, it, it, it was, no, we can't see it yet. Uh, yes.
Dennis, I also, uh, I'm, I'm sort of, um, it's laughable almost, is that we're being criticized. For our affiliation with the Arts, Arts and Cultural Commission. Uh, one of the things that they proposed as a, you know. Um, so that they can make this thing go financially is the renting or of putting apartments upstairs. And now in Chris, what he was telling us that they're planning to rent out di- different portions of that building, so.
In, in office, they're, they're looking to continue using the office space as opposed to building apartments, so I think there is a bit difference.
There's a difference, but it's still, tha- that's one of the ways that they're, they're proposing to raise money.
Right.
You know, uh, uh, so um, and as far as the, that maintaining that as a historical building. Uh, I was given the opportunity to tour it, and um, there's nothing left of the old building. It's gone. The only thing that's there is that mural and a little portion of the entrance, um, but the rest of the building. It's gone, as far as, you know, the, the old history of it. Um, so um. And, and that place next door was nothing more than, it was the telephone company, and it was, was answering machines, you know, it's the, the, the ladies that. You know, that, that operated the telephone system, so. And then the museum is right across the street. There again, we've got a museum right across the street. So what are we gonna do? Load up the downtown with museums? Uh, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. Um, I think we, we need to uh, move this along and uh, and. We, we kind of walked into this without a clear um, exit, because um, I think it was important to hear. Uh, the public's comments. Um, we, none of us have heard these, a lot of this information that was provided tonight, until tonight. And so I, I, I originally was going to draft some kind of, you know, proposed document, but you know, as, as I started thinking about it, I didn't know what we would. Encounter tonight to know where to go with this. And uh, and we, there was a lot of new information, in my opinion, that was provided tonight that we have not seen before, and it's. Uh, disheartening to hear that. Um, I don't disagree that the county has some latitude and where they want to go and how they want to do it. But I, and, and I strongly disagree with the, the fact that they are going to put this asset in. In control of some, of, of a non-city entity, and I agree with the. Um, uh, Mr. Clarici, John Clarici, where he stated that it's, it's, it's a difference to get elected to, to the Board of Directors of a. Of a uh, of the historical society as opposed to having an accountability and responsibility as a city. As an elected official for the city and on the city council. There's, it's, it's two different, two completely different animals. Um, and so the accountability is there with the city to the community. Uh, anybody have any, any suggestions? Yes. Okay, Kara, I'm not sure.
I've, I've got a really small desk, and I have my papers on my laptop, and I must be like right over the.
Okay. Okay.
So I would like to make a motion that we um, adopt option one of staff's recommendation to. Direct staff to prepare a letter to the Board of Supervisors outlining our concerns and lack of transparency. And I just, I want to reiterate that um, you know, this is not about the other proposal. Um, and, and I really do, for the good of the community, if the county goes forward with, with the direction that they most likely are. Um, I really do wish them the best of luck and the best of success, and I hope that is good for downtown. Um, but I, I'm really concerned that we had another proposal that had been embedded with Peak, that had been embedded with the Blue Ribbon Committee. That had been embedded, you know, with the council and the public, um, and, and this other one has not yet, so. I, you know, I, I will be wish them the best should, should they end up with the buildings. Um, but I am just very concerned with, with the process that's happened.
Yes.
I'll second your motion.
All right, um, I would have to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna provide further comment. Um, I would have to agree with. Uh, with your statement, and I, and I, and I'm, I'm supporting it because I, I do believe that the county. Um, needs to recognize the sovereign sovereignty of the city. And, and for us to have access and control this asset, and it's not because we, we don't want. Uh, both of these organizations to have the opportunity to move forward in, in their ideas. Um, and my mind has shifted on that a bit. I, I, at one point, I was like, no, no, it's just one way or the other, and I believe that in our position. As city council members, we have to, you know, consider nuance and consider what, you know, what all of our community is thinking about, so. Um, and I believe that there is, there is a, a opportunity for nuance, so that these things can happen, that the. The support that, that is given from both of these organizations can help to make a better program for, for the entire community. And not just one or, organization or the other, and I think that is our highest and best use of these properties. And, and I think the city is, is the rightful person, a rightful organization to at least have ownership of the, of the, of, of it. And not have the county giving us direction. Uh, giving the direction of what they think is the best thing for these assets in our, in our town, and what makes or breaks a deal. That is being made with, with either one of these, uh, either us or them. We're actually then, because us, we would have some more control over that, so. Um, with that said, uh, Ms. O'Connell, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right, and I, I want to, I want to express my appreciation for Chris for jumping on and providing, um, you know, uh, being. Um, providing a, a somewhat of a candid description of everything that's going on, and, and. And I appreciate your willingness to step into this forum and, and share your thoughts, as well as everybody else's thoughts that, that took time this evening. Out of their regularly scheduled programs to, to spend them with us, and uh, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close this meeting. And we look forward to seeing you probably, I think it's next Tuesday. Is it next Tuesday, Cleve?
Two weeks.
In, in two weeks.
Week from Tuesday.
Yes, and everybody have a good evening.
Hey, just quickly, just a reminder to everybody, that meeting will start at, that's our new time, five o'clock, not six o'clock meeting on the thirteenth, so.
Dennis, uh, would you also clarify now, this is going to go before the Board of Supervisors? When and where and what time?
So it is on the consent calendar. It is item number eight on the consent calendar, I, I've found out. Um, and if it's, if no, if it's not pulled by or brought forward by one of the supervisors. It will just pass through as a consent item only and have um, limited discussion, so. Um, but I do know that there's, I don't know how the county operates their, uh, their consent items, i- if it's the same as we do or not. But I think it's important for people to take the opportunity to, at this point, if you feel so compelled to send a letter. And write emails to the Board of Supervisors expressing your opinion, one way or the other, and I believe that there's, there's plenty on both sides this year, so. I think it's a great opportunity for uh, our community to speak up and let the Board of Supervisors know where you feel that this should go.
Should they specifically ask our supervisor uh, to pull this item?
For, yes, they, they could do that. They can ask any one of the supervisors to do that, and I think that letters should go to all of the supervisors. For them to uh, for them to uh, to hear your, your opinion and not just uh, supervisor for District Three.
So is our letter going to go to the supervisors as a, as a, as the, a bulk, or is it going to go to each individual supervisor?
I, I don't know how that's going to happen. I think there's a, there's a protocol that we have for communicating with the county, and we'll probably follow that. Who's that? Is that a fair statement?
I mean, let me just state that the entire board will get our letter, let me put it that way.
Okay.
All right, any, any further comments before I close, finish, finish closing? All right.
No, I just wanted to make it clear what, what the, what our, um, you know, that, what, what we can do, our citizens can do. That would, you know, like to further this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patty. Now, with no other, for the good of the order, we'll go ahead and close the meeting, and everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Good night.